Good evening. This is the planning board. It is February 5th, 2018. It is 7:07 PM. And this meeting is being recorded by Harbor Media. We're going to start tonight's meeting with administrative reports. Mary, do you have any administrative reports for us? No. In that case, we will move to hopefully vote on some minutes. We have the minutes from the meetings of January 3rd, 8th, and 16th before you. And we have, I believe, the right people here to vote on them. Yes? Yeah, great. I have a couple of little comments. On the January 3rd minutes, the paragraph under administrative reports, the third sentence there, the planner also handed out FYI-only copies of, "I want to delete some advisory and then just leave correspondence." These are actually some of Mary's edits from Dolores having done the minutes. And then, on the final sentence of the page, I would propose that we delete submission in that final sentence. So it would read, "The next step is to review those comments and proceed with..." Instead of submission, it would read, "A report to the selectman." And then on the back, "The Redtail Lane, 170 Gardner Street." I would suggest that we delete "was approved" at the end of the sentence there. The request to continue, we continued. And then, let's see. And then in the last big paragraph there at the bottom, where it says, "The Chair made a motion to approve the site plan review application." I would add, "with conditions which was seconded and so voted." Does anyone else have anything on the minutes from January 3rd?
I don't.
No? Thank you. I would make a motion then that we approve the minutes from the meeting of January 3rd, 2018, with the edits just discussed tonight here. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Now, okay, moving to January 8th minutes. I have a couple of comments here as well. The very last sentence on the first page, I would ask that we change it to read, instead of what it currently reads, "Just the Board asked for public comments." And then, on the third page, there's that little paragraph there. I would ask that we edit it to read, "The Chair once again opened the floor to the public for any further dialogue on the marijuana articles which were then continued to the meeting of January 22nd, 2018. Delete the following sentence and add, the hearing on accessory dwelling unit article was continued to January 29th, Does anyone have any...
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds okay with you?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 8th, 2018, with the edits we just discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, one more. January 16th, 2018. Mary gave me a few comments here as well. Looks like we have a spelling error in the... So on the second page, under 16 North Street, Mr. Strzokowski's first name...
Sevy.
Sevy, so V-C-E-V-Y, instead of what's there. And then, the reference to the zoning bylaw should be Section 3-G. So that's just an edit. And then after it says sufficient, instead of sufficient permits exist, it should read sufficient residential parking permits exist. In the next new paragraph, just the one line there, I would like to see it edited to say, "Following brief discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and voted to waive site plan review." Instead of the... So delete SPR-A2/3. And then in the next paragraph, the third line, office use, so it would say, "To support the proposed conversion of the existing second-level office use," and then insert "to a residential unit as presented with conditions." Do you have any comments on that or anything else on these minutes? Hearing none, I will make a motion that we vote to approve the minutes of January 16th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks. I think we're actually a little early to start our hearing. Susan, do we need to wait until exactly 7:15 to start?
Mary, how...
We do, right?
Is this how that works?
Yeah. Oh, we have continuancees anyway. Never mind. Yeah, yeah, I forgot. Do I have requests in here?
They're on top of your...
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Sea Chain Marina LLC. The Hingham Shipyard Marina is 24 Shipyard Drive. We have a request to continue the public hearing, so I will make a motion that we continue the public hearing for this matter to February 12th, 2018.
And Madam Chair, and extend the decision date, I think, to March 12th.
Let me see. 24 Shipyard. Yes, so right. I will amend that motion to include extending the decision deadline to March 12th, 2018. That's it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'm going to sign that one. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Redtail Lane, 170 Gardner Street, Joe Kennedy. We have a request to continue this public hearing, so I will make a motion that we continue the public hearing for this matter to February 12th, 2018. And we're not moving the decision deadline on this one?
No, we're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mary. All right. That'll get us pretty close to 7:15. Would you mind handing those down to Mary?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay. In about two minutes, we will move on to the next portion of our meeting, the public hearing. Because we can't start that early. All right. All right. I'm going to say a town item. They're just putting them all up because they're not on the list. So they can just move it on item to item to item. We typically do. We typically do. But sometimes we don't. We do. So, but when we do, we have to fight over it. There's like... Twenty-two speed more. All right. Thanks.
Getting some reverb.
Mary, I just have a question. It's about the... How we identify it, right? Okay, great. Is it 7:15? Great. All right. Okay, then. The next item on our agenda this evening, now that it is 7:15, is the public hearings for the proposed amendments to the Hingham zoning bylaw related to Section 5-H Registered Marijuana Dispensaries, Section 3A, a ban on marijuana establishments, and the regulation of the sale and consumption of marijuana not medically prescribed, and then definitions related to marijuana not medically prescribed. So just to back up, the last time we met, we did sort of an overview of... Susan and Mary mostly did an overview of the status of our zoning related to marijuana, medicinal marijuana, and also the legislation that has come down from the state and the corresponding regulations that came out in draft form in December. And we went, we got through a bit of material last time. I would suggest, with my board's agreement, hopefully, that we move on to start to discuss the time, place, and manner regulation that... You know, it seems to me that we were all on the same page last time. We didn't vote on the exact version of the ban, but we were all on the same page in terms of wanting to put forth a ban. But in the event that the ban, excuse me, did not pass a town meeting, we would want to have a time, place, and manner regulation ready to cover that for ourselves. So, that being said, I think that the next thing we need to do is start to march through that. Mary or Susan, do you have a suggestion of how we should start to go through this?
And then, Jen, we don't have to, whatever order or schedule you want to do it. There has been one suggested or two suggested changes on the ban, but you can kind of wait and do that at the end if you want to, or wait till you get to vote, so...
That's a good question. So, two housekeeping things. Because we're not a full board tonight, we won't be voting on any of the marijuana, even if we were done with some of them, which I think we could potentially be done because we were close last time. But without our full board, we will not vote. And then also, due to an unforeseen situation, we will be ending the meeting at 8:30 sharp tonight.
Okay.
So I don't know what we're going to get through, Susan, to answer your question. I agree with you, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we could hammer out the ban, hopefully, the next time we're all together and vote on it?
Yep.
If that's okay with my board?
Right. There's nothing significantly substantive that's changed.
Okay.
I just want to...
Okay, great. Thank you.
What... So on the time, place, and manner regulation, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about a bunch of different issues. I don't, can't recall if we got through every single provision of it. I think where you didn't kind of take up is the, in detail, was the Schedule 3A, districts and uses.
The where. The what and where.
But, so, I can run through quickly and to, up into the point that the board got last time, what you have in front of you as far as the track changes, and then you can start then, do your line-by-line from there. Would that work?
I think that would be helpful. Yeah.
Okay. And I can explain whether... So, the changes, and the track changes while, and I had put this in my email to Mary, while it may look like there's a lot of changes, and without in color, you can't see it, but in the color version, there's a lot of green. Green means things have moved as opposed to being deleted. So there was a lot of more reorganization than there was substantive language changes. So, the first, and this is just a minor change, in the name of the article, there's a suggested change from regulation of sale and consumption of marijuana not medically prescribed to just marijuana not medically prescribed. Two reasons for that. The first is, none of the other sections start with regulation of, like bed and breakfasts or common driveways. So just for consistency in the table of contents. And then, the regulation is beyond sale and consumption. It's also manufacturing and cultivation. And so just for simplicity's sake, that's a recommended change in the title. The changes in Sections 1, 2, and 3 were recommended by John Coughlin. So that language adds to the purpose... Nope, I'm sorry. The changes in 1 and 3 were recommended by John Coughlin, to the extent marijuana establishments and businesses dealing are not otherwise prohibited by any general bylaw regulation of the town of Hingham. There is a possibility, a town meeting, of one of the bans passing, because there's two bans proposed, and one not passing. And, I mean, that could happen. And so John feels like, you know, if the zoning ban doesn't pass, but the general bylaw ban does pass, because it's a lower vote threshold, that having this caveat in here is in the town's interest. So he's recommending inserting that language in 1 and 3.
Okay.
Number 2, there's other sections later on in this bylaw where I've added references to the Cannabis Control Commission, consistent with our discussion at the last hearing. And so I just wanted to kind of build that in. In 4, and of course, this is for the board, because there's different types of marijuana establishments, and the different types aren't allowed in all of the districts, the same districts, I added a reference to Sections 3A and 3B. I deleted the reference to the special permit A3 parking determination, because that's true for every use. If it's required, it's required. So just for consistency throughout the bylaw, I thought it wasn't necessary. But that's up to the board whether you want it there or not. Is this a suggestion, recommendation?
Because it's automatically required.
Yeah. I mean, if it's required, it's required.
Okay.
Okay. For B, so this is under special permit requirements. So this is, there's two things happening here. The first one is making the language consistent with other sections of the bylaw. So, first of all, the first clause that got deleted didn't make sense as we discussed the last hearing. So, some of these, some of these are consistent with just what was discussed, and some of them were relocated per our discussion from the last hearing. So, for example, and Jen, you might want to just walk through these. So, because some of the language I grabbed from reviewing the... Remember, you asked me to go back, review the regulations, the draft regulations, and kind of... So this is new language, so I don't know if you want to just walk through it.
Shall I do that now?
Sure. Whatever.
All right. So, "A special permit application for a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories shall include the following. The first is a complete and detailed description of the type of marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories proposed for the premises, including without limitation, the activities proposed for the premises and products to be cultivated, processed, manufactured, sold, or distributed at the premises."
Okay. The second, the next one was deleted because, and again, this is for the board's discretion. This is a recommendation.
Okay.
I deleted, I deleted, this is a requirement under the regulations for applicants for the license to the state. Typically, for any other type of use, you know, you get the name of the applicant, whichever company or individual that would be. But this kind of requiring details right down to the last investor of the company is not consistent with the rest of the bylaw. In addition, you'll see there's, in the next one, number 2, I've suggested after reviewing the regulations that the applicant be required to give a copy of anything they've submitted to the state, to the board, and therefore, you'll get all of that and more. So it kind of gets rolled into, into the new number 2.
Okay. So then the new number 2 is, "A complete copy of any application and all documentation and support thereof submitted to the Cannabis Control Commission for licensure and pending with or granted by the Cannabis Control Commission, and if applicable, copies of all licenses and permits issued to the applicant by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any of its agencies for a registered marijuana dispensary, marijuana establishment, or business dealing in marijuana accessories." That makes sense to me, that we would do it that way.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Because originally, it was, they have to give you the license. Remember, we had the debate, and I'll tell you that I'm going to try to do things briefly, because I know you don't have a lot of time. The Mass Municipal Lawyers Association has submitted to the Cannabis Control Commission a kind of detailed list of all of their questions and recommendations for what doesn't make sense, et cetera. A lot of the things we talked about the last hearing. And one of the questions they raised was the same one Bill raised last time, which is, well, you know, chicken or egg? You know, are, do they have to get the special permit first? Are they going to the state first? This way, it covers either, right? So if they're required to go to the state first, then they'll provide you the copy of the license and all the backup materials. Or if they're required to come here first, then they'll give you an application and all the...
Mm-hmm. That makes sense. Okay. And 3 is new?
3 is new. This what, but it's related to this, so this is, this is the buffer zone question.
Yes. Okay. So let's talk about this, big picture.
Oh, so that gets you to the maps.
This gets to the maps.
You have two maps. So I think, thank Lonnie Fournier, who is, manages the GIS for the town. So whenever there's a map needed of any kind, we go to Lonnie. So this goes to a discrepancy within, internally, in the draft regulations, as we discussed.
Yep.
The regulations in one section mirror what's in the statute, which says that the establishment is not within 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or grades 1 through 12. So basically, just schools, public or private schools, unless a municipality has adopted a bylaw that reduces that distance. So it permits reducing, but it doesn't speak to expanding. So we're, so it's 500 feet. And this provision, which mirrors what's in the actual statute, is, as I said, kindergarten through 12. What is also in the regulations, and we believe it came from the original medical marijuana statute, but is not in the recreational marijuana statute, is language that's 500 feet of a public or private school, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate, which is very ambiguous. The recommendations from the Mass Municipal Association, Lawyers Association, is keeping broader language, but getting rid of children commonly congregate. And they're recommending, it's a playgrounds or athletic field. Like they're recommending keeping this broader buffer zone, but with different language, and it's going to be up to the commission, and we won't know that until sometime mid or late March. So, on the two maps that you have, you can see there's a legend down at the bottom. The one that only has the red, and then there's one purple. The purples over at the South Shore Conservatory, they have a kindergarten program. So that's why they're in a different color. All the rest are the public and private schools that have kindergarten and above. So that's, that's that map. The second map is the more expansive description or buffer is kept in place. It includes, and it's color-coded. So blues are daycare, the purple again is South Shore Conservatory, and then there's other. And the other includes mostly playgrounds and athletic fields.
That was what Lonnie chose to put on here, right?
Yeah. I believe Mary gave, Mary provided, right? You provided Lonnie with a map, with a list of recommended locations.
Ballfields, playgrounds, but no, not any businesses or...
It was like the community center was out there.
The community center, we put in as other.
I mean, it's likely not an exhaustive list.
Right. But something like, something like a shopping center where kids hang out, we...
Not known as, not crowpy.
Yeah. Right. You know, so, I mean, looking at the ones that's just the schools, so you have a sense. Most of them, even with the, so, and then the, just with Lonnie's methodology, was because they don't speak to from the property line, there's nothing. It just says from the school. So how do you define the school? Is it the property line of the school? Is it the school building? So Lonnie took a middle, middle ground, and said, "The school building, the playgrounds and fields around the school, and the parking lot of the school." So for example, if you look at Foster Elementary School, which is labeled on the ones that's the schools, the lot is more than double the size. So the solid line is what she was calling the facility.
Yep.
And then the dotted line is the 500 feet around that. But the majority of that lot is woods and wetlands, and not used as part of the school. So she took kind of a conservative middle ground, not just the building, but the facilities used by the children around the building.
Right.
You know, this, as you can see, big draft stamp. This is, it was really just to try to give a sense.
Right. This is not a bylaw. This is not, I mean, the reality of how this would play out, I'm just thinking out loud, would be that if we end up with a regulation, and if we adopt something that looks, let's say, like the one, the more populated map here...
Right.
An applicant would, in theory, come to the town and propose a location, and the town would respond. This map wouldn't dictate our response at that point.
No, no. And that's why it's just, right.
This is just illustrated for us in terms of understanding where in town would clearly be ruled out, and some of the others probably...
Right. So the application would come to the town, and the town would say, they may say, "Oh, it's not within 500 feet," because they're just counting the building. And the town might say, "Well, like, so for example, St. Paul's, we can look at that one, because that's a better example." But, well, this one is, because if you use the entire lot of Foster School, including wetlands and all, then that 500-foot radius would go into that business B area.
It's the statute that says parcel, or is unclear?
It does. It just says school. It just says school, daycare center, right? It doesn't say property line. It doesn't say, you know, it kind of leaves it a little bit ambiguous. So on just the school one, on just the school map, the one, the schools that touch on a commercial, a non-residential zone, would be Sioux Escoella, which, and it's hard to see, but Sioux Escoella is actually in a limited industrial. It's kind of, what color is that, Mary? Like a gray?
It's like a purplish, gray.
Light lavender.
But it kind of looks the same as the industrial that's all around it. But for the most part, this one was a little difficult, because Sioux Escoella is just within a much bigger building. So Lonnie took a portion of the building, not the entire building, and then did 500 feet around there.
It is gray on our zoning map. It is gray. You're right.
So, but basically, that 500-foot radius pretty much takes up the entire limited industrial district by itself. And then it bleeds into the industrial district around it.
Yeah.
Just kind of touching, kissing the edge of the shipyard, but not quite...
Talbets and Stop &amp; Shop.
Right. But it's a big chunk of the Talbets parcel and a little bit of the Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center. The St. Paul's, which is up near the harbor, that one, you can see, would take out a portion of downtown Hingham, but, you know, maybe a quarter of it, not the entire downtown. So that's business District A and the downtown Hingham Overlay District. And then the other ones that are down in South Hingham, the South Shore Collaborative, it affects a portion of the industrial park. And then Old Colony Montessori School is just the corner of the industrial park.
Where the Starbucks is in the industrial park.
So without going item by item on the other map, you can just see, obviously, the industrial park. Oh, I think in here, there's like a gymnastics school in the industrial park that she put in.
There is. There's the rock climbing and the cheerleading.
Yeah. So, in the green, you're hitting on a lot of other things. So you could see more of the industrial park is affected, more of business B right up at the Derby Street, Cushing Street intersection, Whiting Street is affected. A lot of the industrial park, because Bright Horizons is in the shipyard, is affected. There's also...
Brown Bear or whatever that is.
Yeah. There's another, right? So, you know, a lot more of, not a lot more, but it's, you know, good, larger portion of the downtown overlay district is affected.
Right.
So, you know, this is one that I can't tell you where the regulations are going to come out.
Right.
The statute has the more limited description. I wouldn't, the, like I said, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association advocated for just having a little better definition around places children congregate, but they, they put, they kept daycares in, they put playgrounds and athletic fields. So, which is, but I don't know that they'd have the gymnastics school if that got adopted. And there may be opponents who say, "You can't go beyond what's in the statute." And... Oh, I think in here, there's like a, um, a gymnastics school in the industrial park that she put in.
There is, there's the rock climbing and the cheerleading.
Yeah. So in the green, you're, you're hitting on a lot of other things. So you could see more of the industrial park is affected, more of Business B right up at the, um, at the Derby Street, Cushing Street intersection, Whiting Street.
Yep.
Is affected. Um, a lot of the industrial park, because Bright Horizons.
Yep.
Is in the shipyard is affected. There's also...
Brown Bear or whatever that is.
Yeah, there's another, right. So, um, you know, a lot more of, not a lot more, but it's, you know, good, larger portion of the downtown overlay district is affected.
Right.
So, uh, you know, this is one that I can't tell you where the regulations are going to come out.
Right.
Um, the statute has the more limited description. I wouldn't, the, um, like I said, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association advocated for just having a little better definition around places children congregate, but they, they put, they kept daycares in, they put playgrounds and athletic fields, so, which is, but I don't know that they'd have the gymnastics school if that got adopted.
Mm-hmm.
And there may be opponents who say, "You can't go beyond what's in the statute," and the commission may go down. Now, if the board were to decide, "Well, the draft regulations allow for this much broader definition." Um, and then it comes out that that's not legally permissible, and this goes, and this gets adopted, and it goes to the Attorney General's office. I can't say exactly what the municipal law unit would do.
Right.
But I think there's a fair, fair guess, um, educated guess, that if it said, "Public or private school, daycare, et cetera, et cetera," since the statute is limited to public and private school, what the law unit could do is say, "We're striking daycare and places where children congregate," and leaving the rest. Or they could strike the entire, just that provision. They have a line item veto over these.
Right.
So they could strike them. Or, and then the, the town would then just default to what's in the statute and could come back next year and redo it.
Right.
So, um, but worst-case scenario, if the board went with the more expansive buffer zone that's in the regulations, the worst-case scenario is it gets stricken, but the underlying minimum one of 500 feet from kindergarten through 12 is in the statute, that would stay in place.
And we presume, we presume the statute's not going to change. At least in Texas.
Right, and you can't, there's no promises there either, but that, that, as, as of things, we know that the regulations can change. At this point, there's no bills pending to change the legislation. So it's really a decision for the board as to whether or not you want to put this forward with the narrower statutory buffer, or with the broader draft buffer.
Okay. So I would, go ahead.
Could I ask a question on, uh, I'm on, uh, the draft, and it's on 5H Registered Marijuana Dispensary Section, or Paragraph Six.
Medical marijuana? Yeah, you're on the medical marijuana.
Are you referring to another buffer zone within our bylaw?
Yeah.
Is that where you're going with it?
Yeah, I'm on the registered marijuana dispensaries piece. And what it says is, um, under, and my question's, you're right, it's about the boundaries, under general requirements and conditions, and it says, um, "In addition to the dimensional requirements set forth, Section 4A for the South Hingham Development Overlay District or the underlying zoning districts therein, RMD show any part thereof should not be located within 500 feet of the boundary of any residence zoning district, school, or outdoor playing or athletic fields, except when such uses are separated by Derby Street, Whiting Street, or Route 3." So my question is on, how are the boundaries different relative to that sentence? In other words...
That, so if you remember, the medical marijuana is only allowed in the industrial park.
So this doesn't apply to recreational, then?
No, not at all.
No.
So that was very specifically carved for that use in that, in the industrial park. So it doesn't really translate.
This would be handled completely separately.
Okay.
So let's back up for a moment, and as a board, let's talk about, and think about, because I think, in order to make this decision, I think it would help to think about why there are buffer zones around these places. I think we all know it, but let's just think for a second, right? I mean, obviously, we don't want marijuana establishments next to schools for children who are aware of it. We, that would be mixed messages, it would be easy access. I mean, there's a lot of, um, potential problems there. Um, and many states have come up with these buffer zones. And something I've read about in some of these other states, and the other reason that didn't occur to me at first for some of these buffer zones is the security issue and the safety issue. So because these tend to be, I know there are limited ways to use credit cards, but it's primarily, I believe, a cash operation and high security, and so there's more of a risk of crime, right? So that's, I just wanted to get to the why the buffer is there at all, to think about how we want to, um, apply it in our bylaw.
So is the question a cumulative boundary, for example, up in, uh, near Beale Street, where you have several uses overlapping? The boundary would be the cumulative radius of all those overlapping uses?
If we adopt language which mirrors the leg, the, the proposed December regulation, and if the interpretation of that regulation meets what is illustrated on that map, yes. That's a lawyer answer, but yeah. Um, so, right, so we need to decide, do we want just the statute? Do we want the regulation? Do we want to modify the language as suggested by the Mass Municipal Lawyers? What are you guys thinking?
I like the cumulative, I like the one that expands the boundary to cover all the uses. I don't know which aspect of the bylaw that covers.
That's why Susan's here.
But, uh, it seems to me to be the most protective, because, for example, we have a couple of schools here where we have everything from nursery school to, uh, middle school, and we've got some, you know, I'm thinking of the middle school area down in South Hingham, and I'm, even though it's in a residential district, but I'm also thinking of, you know, the ones in the business B where we've got, um, you know, overlapping, uh, daycare and other schools. And, and then also, like in, um, you know, up in the Industrial, off Lincoln Street here, we've got three different overlapping uses, and most of them involve really young children. So it seems to me that the more can, safer, the more conservative approach would be to overlap.
Yeah. Gordon, what are you thinking?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with that. I think one of the things we talked about last fall, though, when we're, when we're considering all of the scenarios of a ban, and then time, place, and manner, we've got to be a little careful that we're not so restrictive that, that, um, that town meeting doesn't accept the time, place, and manner we put forward, and then it can go anywhere.
I don't want to get...
Right? So, um, which I, I think is, you know, I, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we need to be judicious about this.
Yep.
Because it, if we're discussing this article, it's because the ban didn't pass, right? That town meeting, you know, was, had spoken as far as it was concerned on the ban. So, um, I, you know, I don't like the idea of, of, um, uh, of having it too close to some of these locations either, but it just, that's sort of the, the downside risk, I guess, is what I'd say.
Yeah, that's true. So let's look at, and I know we haven't gotten into where, so let's not, we won't get into which type of use right now, like whether it's a cul, well, the cultivated, some of the industrial is just in the industrial, but...
Right.
In terms of a retail establishment, assuming there were no other limitations in what we put forward, which I know we're not there yet, what, let's talk about what's left, what's not eliminated by the circles you see before you on the more populated map. So it's part of the shipyard, um, part of the Talbets and other area over where Massa is, along 53, um, that whole, where CrossFit and all the way down to the Tedeschi and the gas station and the Starbucks across the street. Three, what did I say, 53? Thank you, 3A.
3A, yep.
Um, some of the downtown, or...
A portion of the downtown, yep.
A portion of the downtown is still left. Um, a little portion over by Hull, way out on Rockland Street, that's, it looks a little faint, like the color doesn't really show on this map, but that's still there, way out here.
Oh, right.
That is, um...
Five corners.
What is that? Business, Business A or Business B?
Business A, Mary, out there in the far corner near Colhaste.
It's clear on this one.
Yeah, on the big map, you can see it there.
Yeah, it's Business A. It's Business A out here. And then the center.
Oh, she's way up there, God, that's...
Where Atlantic Bagel is, that's still on here. And, let's see. And a lot of derby shops, and a lot of the industrial area down there, and on Queen Anne's Corner remains. And a little portion that the, that the Montessori School and preschool playmates don't eliminate, but that's a pretty small, just a couple parcels there.
And all of the office park is pink.
Oh, yeah.
And the office park.
Okay. So that's what would remain if we allowed it in all of, if we allowed retail in all of those.
So there's still a fair amount of places, depending on what use, if the conversation is, are we zoning it out of town?
Yeah. Susan, what's your opinion on that?
Doesn't look like it.
Yeah, so, right, so you can't have regulations that, in effect, you're allowing it, but once you draw the circles, if you're in effect banning it. As you noted, all of the, I believe, with the exception of limited industrial, but that's just a function of a school being plopped in the middle of it, and it being small. Um, every type, right now, without any further regulation that the board might recommend, every non-residential district has an area that is technically available, right?
Okay. And you think that would likely be sufficient? It would, it would pass muster in any case, likely.
Yes.
Okay.
Assuming that the buffer zone is kept in place by the CCC.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Um, I mean, I think it's a defensible, in response to what you're saying, Gordon, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's a defensible way to sort of regulate place. Um, I personally prefer the, um, the more expansive interpretation of the, the more circles, that's not really the technical term. Um, and even beyond that, I would, the Mass Municipal Law is notwithstanding, I think I would personally be inclined to just stick with what the regulation says for now, since we're in this in-between. I wouldn't, I don't want to guess at what, how it's moving, but I'd rather just stick with it and have to change it if and when it's changed, unless you feel strongly, if you think that's a mistake, you know, I, I don't... I think they're still guessing, right?
Right.
No, well, I explained to you what the pros and cons and the potential, um...
Right.
You know, response from the AG's office can be, so it's up to the board what you're com, what you're comfortable with.
I mean, the bottom line is if we end up with this time, place, and manner regulation, no matter how hard we try, we know that, we don't know the final regulations yet. So we know that we may have something in our bylaw that...
Right, well, you'll know before town meeting. But you'll know, but after the, after the warrant is completed, but before a town meeting, you'll know.
Right.
So you could always evaluate across that bridge when you get there, right?
Advisory with love, Todd, if we try to...
Um, I'll just note that there is a possibility that because you have bans and time, place, and manner in all of these, and, um, my understanding is that there's a question that voters may want to understand what's in the time, place, and manner before they decide whether they want the ban or not the ban. It's possible, and it's going to be up to the moderator, that all of the recreational marijuana bylaws, general and zoning, will all be discussed at the same time. They'll then be voted in a certain order, but the discussion, it might not just be a discussion ban or no ban. It may be, "Well, if we don't have the ban, what, what will we get?" And that might, to inform people's opinion as to whether or not they want the ban. So you may be taught, so to your point, you had said, "Well, if we're talking about this, this means a ban failed." No, you may be discussing it because people may want to understand what's in the time, place, and manner, and before they decide if they want the ban or not. So that's obviously a call for the moderator as to how he's going to handle that discussion, um, but I think that that's a possibility.
Okay.
Okay, so in Little Roman III, it sounds as if you're deleting all, from all pre-existing public schools through 12, and then the italics from after the war, and getting rid of the bracket. So, am I, I'm sorry, am I jumping the gun, or is that what you all said?
Gordon, do you agree with the, the more populated map?
The more circle map.
Yeah, the more circle. Such a technical term.
Yeah.
So then therefore, the language will mirror the regulation. That's where this is going.
The, the broad, yes, yes, um, the regulations are inconsistent, but yes. The broader, broader zone.
The broader buffer zone, fair point.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Um, in Roman IV and V, um, it's just cleanup. Um, as you, in, six was just like we said, the names of the shareholders that got rolled in. Um, the security measures, where is it? Oh, so the security measures has been moved down, so we can talk about that. Um, the park, six is the parking just clarified, because there was some confusion as to whether or not that was clear at the last hearing.
A list of any vehicles, this is, so this is still under what they're submitting with their application.
Yep.
A list of any vehicles associated with the business and anticipated to be used for business purposes and/or parked on the premises during non-business hours. All right?
Um, and then seven was just, so, in seven, what I attempted to do with the security is, and we talked about this in the chiefless year last time, that kind of, drawing a balance between wanting the boards, the zoning and planning boards wanting to know that there's adequate security, but not requiring so much public disclosure that it could jeopardize the security system. So I, this is my stab at it for the board's consideration.
So it's a, it reads, um, "A summary of the proposed security measures for the premises. Provided that the Board of Appeals and Planning Board during site plan review under Section 1I may require that detailed information regarding the security measures be shared with the Hingham Police Department and Hingham Fire Department, and may request input from such public safety departments as to the adequacy of the proposed security measures shown on the site plan." Okay.
So it's basically, they're going to kind of give you a summary, "Oh, we're going to have six-foot-high fences, and we're going to have this or that," and, but maybe not get into, you know, "This is where every place we're putting a camera," kind of thing.
Right, right, right.
So, um, the security is something that is very detailed in the regulations and the licensing process. Um, but the regulations also refer to law enforcement having access to this information. So I've just tried to suggest language that is a reasonable middle ground, so...
I like the way this reads.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
And then the, the hours. Um, so you, you can't see again, because you don't have the color, the mandatory fines are...
I just have, yeah, that's very good color.
Oh, okay, so those are, it's, it should be in green. It's just been relocated. So on approval criteria, the goal again was to mirror existing language in the bylaw that deals with special permits. So if you look in Section, um, I think it's out 1A or B, where the zoning, where the zoning board's special permit criteria is laid out, um, the language reads, "The Board of Appeals may approve a special permit."
Does that help you?
You know, if it's fine. So I just mirrored, I mirrored existing language in the bylaw.
Yep.
Um, so this is, again, this is just relocated. Um, it, and again, and I put in my email as well, the cover email, I just did some reformatting that was non-substantive to have it match. So A and B was, were A and C. I, there was a question raised about B, so you're seeing it as deleted now?
Yeah.
Um, and the reason, but again, this is up to the board, this is just my recommendation, um, that, a finding that the applicant will meet the permitting requirements of all other applicable state and local authorities, and I, I think the question was, well, how, how will the zoning board know that they are, will meet the other requirements of other? So it just didn't seem something that the zoning board really would be in a position to make that finding? Like, how will they know? So, you know, I mean, for example, let's just say they have to go to Concom. Well, how will the zoning board be able to say, "Well, we know, we find that they will satisfy the Concom"? I, it says, so it, it didn't seem to be very, um, workable.
Right.
And all of the other special permit criteria that are already in the zoning bylaw still apply.
Right.
So it's not as if these are the only criteria.
So, so conditioning it on Concom approval, and conditioning it on other approvals is still obviously how this would work?
Yeah, I mean, it's, as always, if they have to get whatever permits they have to get to, so on page six of the zoning bylaw, there's already A through G, so that's seven site plan criteria, and this would be two more on top of that.
Okay, I see.
Um...
Yep. I had a question about the approval criteria.
Yep.
We call them, um, on page three, down in the paragraph under approval criteria, mandatory conditions?
No, no, so subject to mandatory conditions, so those come later.
And are those...
Oh, but they're not.
But we call them general conditions.
Yep, that's a typo.
So...
So let me just, why don't I read that out so that I make sure we're on the same page, if that's okay?
Yes.
Um, approval criteria. "In addition to the approval criteria set forth in Section 1-F dot 2 of this zoning bylaw, uh, the Board of Appeals may approve..."
Oh, the word "the" is missing.
Yep. "...may approve a special permit for a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories, subject to the mandatory conditions set forth in this Section 5-J if it finds A, the applicant has satisfied all of the requirements of this Section 5-J and any other applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw, and that the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories is not otherwise prohibited by any general bylaw or regulation of the town of Hingham."
So that's John, John Conlin language.
Okay. And B, "The marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories is designed to minimize any adverse visual, adverse visual, odor, audible, vehicul... to minimize any adverse visual, adverse visual, odor, audible, vehicular, or economic impacts on a butters or the surrounding neighborhood. Okay.
So are they, because you read it, Jen, is it subject to the general conditions, or is it subject to the mandatory conditions?
No, it should say, I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, my, my understanding from the last meeting are, these are conditions that it's intended will be imposed on every special permit issued for this? So it seems that, I mean, I guess you can use either word. I mean, if they have to be imposed, they have to be imposed, so whatever you're more comfortable with, language-wise, I don't think it's.
You typically call them general conditions?
I think it's semantics. I don't know, Mary, do you think?
I don't care, they should just say the same thing.
As long as it matches, I don't have a, it's the board's. I mean, if they're going to be required.
Whatever you guys want. I think general.
General?
What do you think?
It's fine.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So, hold on a second, so that, where is that? The general conditions? Okay. One thing that I didn't point out, that I should have pointed out, because you'll see in what's now 6, used to be A, use variance strictly prohibited, that's been moved to 4A.
Yeah.
Under, shall not be permitted by use variance.
Marijuana sales or business dealing in marijuana accessories may only be permitted within the zoning districts authorized for such uses in Section 3-A and 3-B of this zoning bylaw, and shall not be permitted by use variance. Got it?
Okay. Because that, the rest of these are all conditions that will apply to the permit, so that it just didn't seem to fit there.
Yep.
So then you'll see A is, is just a cleanup version of what was already there. So I don't know, Jen, however you want to handle these as far as reading through them.
Special permits shall remain exclusively with the original applicant to whom it is issued. The special permit shall automatically terminate on the date the applicant transfers or conveys its title or leasehold interest as applicable in the land or the building where the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories is located, other than the granting of a mortgage to an institutional lender. A special permit may be transferred only with the approval of the Board of Appeals by major modification to the special permit, with all information required in this Section 5-J.
Is there any thought about a renewal of the special permit, just as an accountability check? Does this read as a permanent, permanent, unless it's, is a land transfer?
Well, it also, there's also, later you have a annual report that they have to file.
Okay, we'll put a pin in that. So then (b) the hours of operation shall be as approved by the Board of Appeals. (c) All sales or other distribution, excuse me, of marijuana or marijuana products or marijuana accessories shall occur indoors. No smoking, burning, or consumption of marijuana or marijuana products shall be permitted on the premises of a marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. And then (d) prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or opening for business, if no certificate of occupancy is required, the applicant shall provide to the Building Commissioner and the Board of Appeals a copy of all state and local licenses and permits required for operation of the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories.
I have a question, if I may.
Yeah, of course.
If we had an existing retail business that then wants to add a shelf of product, so it's basically just, it already is open, it already has its CO, but it's expanding its merchandise, is that captured under this?
Well, that's why it says if no certificate of occupancy is required, because I was thinking of sometimes in, you know, retail, if they're comply, if they're fully compliant with zoning, right?
What if Tedeschi's wants to put in a shelf of edibles, of marijuana stuff?
Well, I don't know that they'd be able to get a license for that, the way the regulations are currently worded. But I, I think to the extent that they don't need a building permit, then there's a pot, there's a scenario where maybe a cert, you know, a certificate of occupancy may already be, here's a retail store, it's fully built out, and now they're just coming in for, to change the use from whatever they were doing, from, you know, selling gadgets to selling marijuana. All, they're literally just take, the other, the other merchant has left and this merchant's coming in, they may not need a building permit, they may not need a CO. So this would be, they get the special permit, they're just go up, open operating, so it would be before the CO or before they open for business.
You're suggesting maybe they're already open for business. What if, like you were just saying, what if?
Right.
Would we do something, or the beginning of sales of a, I don't know.
I mean, so you have a salon, who's now going to start offering specialized things, or?
Isn't that onsite consumption? What if you're just selling, what if you're just selling a lotion with cannabis oil in it or something? I don't know.
I mean, I'm just wondering, I guess, maybe we'll get to it later if there's, you know...
I see, I think I see what you're saying.
Like, it might be an accessory, it might not be their whole stock in trade, they might just want to, like, they carry Coca-Cola, and they carry, you know, chewing tobacco, and maybe they want to carry some of this.
They still have to go through the whole licensing process at the state, though, right?
Well, we could say that, or commencing the use.
Commencing the use. We're just trying to capture when they have to show us the licenses, right?
You want it to say commencing the use instead of opening for business?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I think, no, I think you really could, Mary.
Or commencing the use if no certificate of occupancy is required.
If that shows up in a couple places, so we can just fix it where it shows up.
Sure. Okay. So then, moving on to E, "In the event the type of use, the material operations of the use, or the site plan of the premises is changed by the applicant, or as a result of conditions imposed by any other state or local license or permit, the applicant shall be required to apply for a modification of the special permit." I think I read that fine, but that makes sense. F, "Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or opening for business," here we are again.
Commencing the use.
Or commencing the use. "If no certificate of occupancy is required, the applicant shall provide to the Building Commissioner and the Board of Appeals evidence that the security measures for the marijuana establishment or business, no, for the premises, sorry, for the premises, has been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission, and confirmation that the Hingham Police Department has been provided with the security plans and procedures in accordance with the Act."
So pursuant to the Act, they have to provide it to the police department, if, but to law enforcement if requested by law enforcement, so this is kind of just a little check here to say, in case law enforcement has not thought or known to ask, that it can, it's a little kind of ticklar.
I think that makes sense. G, "Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or commencing of the use, if no certificate of occupancy is required, the applicant shall provide the Hingham Police and Fire Departments, Building Commissioner, and the Board of Appeals with the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all management, staff, and key holders, to whom one can provide notice if there are operating problems associated with the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories." H, "Any special permit issued under this Section 5-J shall lapse, if not exercised, within one year of the effective date thereof."
So there is a proposed change for that language to mirror the zoning bylaw. Now, I had it, and now here we go. So on the bottom of page 4, so the general provision of the bylaw is that it lapses within two years, or a shorter period if so specified by the board, so this would be one year, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause. So my recommendation, and thank you, Victor, for catching this one, is that instead of saying, let's see, shall lapse, not, so within, so get rid of if not exercised, so it's a shall lapse within one year of the effective date thereof, and then mirror the language, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause.
All right, sorry, I'm just trying to get it down. And then I, "Simultaneously with the submission of its annual renewal application with the Cannabis Control Commission," this is what I think, is this go to Gary's point?
Yep.
Question earlier, rather, "or annually on the date of issuance of its then-current state license, if annual renewal of its state license is not required, the applicant shall file a report with the Building Commissioner and Board of Appeals, providing a copy of the renewal application and all current applicable local and state licenses and permits for the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories, including a certification of continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit. A copy of the state license renewal or denial thereof shall be submitted to the Building Commissioner and Board of Appeals immediately after issuance thereof by the Cannabis Control Commission."
So in the first sentence, annual was crossed out, do we want to leave annual in, an annual report?
Well, we have it, the annual's in the, in the first and second lines.
Yep, simultaneously with the submission of its annual renewal.
So currently, the regulations require that they annually renew them. I could see a point in the future where if there's so many, the commission may make that every two, or if things are going smoothly, make it every two years or every three years, so kind of built in, if they don't have to at some point in time do it annually at the state, they still would need to do it annually here, because the board had originally asked for an annual report.
Yep. Okay. That's good. So then, what are we at?
It looks like there's some, I think, I think there's a formatting problem that the paragraph starting with immediately upon, it should be J, so.
So J is immediately upon the earlier of the expiration, surrender, or revocation of any state-issued licenses or registration, or the ceasing of operations at the marijuana establishment or business dealing in marijuana accessories. All marijuana, including plants, marijuana products, and marijuana accessories of any kind, shall be destroyed or removed from the property.
All right, so those, that's it for the conditions. So that's basically, that's 5J.
That's 5J.
Everything after that is definitions and the use table.
Okay.
The definitions, I think we could, these are verbatim, right, Mary, from the statute and the regulations? So the only changes from what you originally submitted that I'm recommending is marijuana microbusiness. That's, that's a potential business that is kind of vertical, so it has cultivation, manufacturing, and delivery, so it's doing three different things. So, you know, the, I have for the purposes of just discussion for tonight, included the microbusiness in italics, in, as like, and potentially in industrial use, but it's up to the board, but I was just trying to give you something to talk about, so I kind of threw it in there. Marijuana testing facility in retailer should just get reversed alphabetically. I didn't make that change in here, I caught it later. So that's, that's it for the definitions. Otherwise, the definitions are verbatim from the statute.
And so can I ask you a question? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I remember last time you, we were discussing the merits of putting the definitions in here at all, as opposed to referencing the state. It sounds like you came down on the side of including them here, so I would just like to understand.
Yeah, and I, and I batted around with John as well, it just, it seemed that there's so many references to these types of uses, that it's going to be more efficient both for staff, boards, and applicants, if they don't have to go pulling out state statutes and regulations if the, if the definitions are here. I mean, there's always like, kind of, two sides to that argument, because if they amend them, then at some point in time, you might have a disconnect between them. Basically, more for clarity within the bylaw itself, within the book for anyone reading it. You know, John and I thought it's better to encode them.
So the definitions in the statute cover whatever definitions end up in the regulations?
And there's more definitions in the regulations than there are in the statute, yes.
So that's sort of my question.
Yes.
But statute trumps regs, I get, so.
Yes, but if you look at the definition of marijuana establishment, it says, "or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business." So therefore, the commission has some latitude to define other types of marijuana, licensed marijuana-related businesses. So marijuana microbusiness seemed like the one that, because it was a hybrid, if one popped up, then, you know, the staff might say, is this animal, vegetable, mineral? Like, what is it? Is it cultivator, is it marijuana?
Right, the social consumption.
Well, social consumption is defined in the regs as a retailer, so, and I did a quick look, and whether it's fast food restaurant or sit-down restaurant, it's, it's in the same districts, it's just regular retailers, if they're not marijuana, are permitted as a right, whereas restaurants require A2. All marijuana's going to require an A2, so it seemed to me that you didn't need to separately call out the social consumption, because it's defined as a retailer under the regulations. Also, it's not allowed in Hingham anyway.
Because we didn't have a ballot vote.
You need a ballot vote in order to allow onsite consumption.
And where's all the transporter definitions fall under the?
Well, the transport, so there's a provision in the statute that towns are not permitted to interfere with the, or regulate the transportation of marijuana. So it, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't recommend, and I know, Mary, and I talked about this a lot when we were drafting this for you, that there would be kind of an appropriate way that made sense to.
Licensing or something.
Yeah, and if it was going to be licensing like taxi cabs, that's done at the selectmen level. It's not a zoning. So, I don't know, it's up to the board, obviously, if you feel like you want to incorporate something, but Mary and I, in reviewing the statute and the regs, and the power given to local, and the fact that you can't say, like, for example, the town couldn't have a bylaw that says marijuana cannot be delivered to any home in the town of Hingham, you cannot do that. So.
Right, you could have a business in the neighboring town that delivers here.
Right.
But we couldn't, I couldn't think, you know, we couldn't stop that, I don't know how.
No, it's not, the statute doesn't allow it.
So my question, I'm looking at a lot of these definitions, and they all imply or describe physical locations or physical aspects, whether it be the growing, or the processing, or the delivery, or what have you. But I'm thinking about how most things are bought today online, and shipped by Amazon or other carriers. I'm just wondering, you know, how does that all apply to this? Because ironically, in the current way of, the way the business is done, is it's all done sort of low-key and remotely, and sort of like, not in a published manner, or in accountable manner, how do we, how does that get dealt with? Because, you know, people, as long as you have a cell phone, you can basically remotely buy, sell, transport, arrange, whatever. I mean, clearly, the facility is a physical facility where it's grown, but is there anything in the regulation that prevents somebody who's operating an online microbusiness from selling marijuana, or hash, or whatever, from Colorado or any other state, in terms of competition and all that, and having it delivered remotely, discreetly, I should say?
Currently, as far as I know, and so there's a little caveat, because I haven't, I've done a lot of research in this, you can't, you can't buy marijuana or marijuana products online and have it shipped. Does that mean it's might not happening on the dark web? Who knows? But from a legal standpoint, I also believe, given the existing potential conflict with federal laws, and using the, you know, interstate, you know, crossing state lines and all these other issues, it's not even contemplated. So in Massachusetts right now, the only way you'll get marijuana is if you walk into a store, or if you call and order, and it gets physically delivered by a delivery person, not by the mailman or FedEx. It would have to be a delivery person who, in a truck or a vehicle, that meets all the security requirements of the regulations, has to literally drive up to you. security requirements of the regulations, has to literally drive up to your front door with it. That's the only way it can happen right now in Massachusetts.
But that purchase, maybe, you said you would call up, is that, it's possible that retailer, the delivery retailer could have a website, maybe, that you would purchase from?
Oh, right, so, you know, right, if there's one in the next town over, and you go online and order whatever you want to order, and set up a delivery time, and then they come and they deliver, yeah, so that could happen online, I guess.
So this.
I'll see how we could stop it.
But zoning only regulates what's on the ground.
Right.
Is a goal, real property.
I was just, I was just thinking of how it's currently done now, and this is going to be a parallel way of doing it at some point.
Do you, is 15 minutes a hard stop?
Yeah, so we have a hard stop at 8:30.
Um, so I, can I, I make a recommendation, but it's up to you.
I'll hear your recommendation.
Just because it hasn't been done at all yet, do you want to take the?
The where?
The 3A.
Yes, that was what I, that is what I want to do next.
I mean, that, so that would jump you, so you've gone through item two, that would jump you to item, you'd, item six, so we'd need to go back to three, four, and five.
Yep.
Yes, so this one, now, there's a bunch of typos and those types of things that I caught, or some of my options.
So I gave you a color printout of this traction, just 3A.
We can deal with those when I hand it to you.
Just now?
One issue.
Let's see, okay, it's this one.
So it should say Section 3 at the top.
Yeah, Section 3, and there's some red.
So it's this one.
Yep.
Oh, you got a color one.
You got red.
Thank you for the color.
Yep.
Makes it easier.
Okay, so on page 16 is the special condition 10 that you've proposed.
Right.
All right, so now if you flip to the tables.
Yep, you've got to start thinking about where.
There's no changes in residential at all, until you get to page 18, 1.8. And so this is excluding any, I'm just going to say MEs, so we don't have to say all the other thing. But excluding MEs from any accessory use to a residential, and that's mainly, I guess, in connection with the home occupation, Mary, is that right?
Yeah, this is for the accessory uses, so we did quickly gloss over the fact that that caveat and special condition 10 of Section 3B.
Yep.
Which excludes MEs.
Right, it would exclude.
Was placed into this table under a number of categories.
Right. So that's the one, that's the one change in residential, and then when you get to the next page, which says, page 19 at the bottom. So the way agricultural works, as you know, is there's 40A, Section 3, does not allow kind of prohibition or special permits for most agricultural uses, however, there's a carve-out for marijuana. So towns are, so that protection for agricultural uses is, does not apply to marijuana cultivation.
Right.
So what's proposed here is, and this is, as you start going through, this matches up with, sorry, here, items six through 23. So as we're going through, these changes each line up to one of the items.
Yep.
Okay. So 2.1, Special Condition 1 and 10, we had, I think, a typo, Mary, it said eight, but it should, it says one in the bylaw now, it was eight in the markup before. So Special Condition 1 and 10, same thing in 2.2, and now you start getting into where does the board want to recommend to allow these? So 2.4 is the marijuana cultivator, and then, you know, I, I just threw, I didn't know where you wanted to put micro-business, so micro-business is in, in a few different places, until the board decides where you want to put it.
Okay, let's remember what a cultivator is, just quickly. It's a.
License to cultivate, process, and package.
Cultivate, process, and package to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Okay?
Okay, so, I mean, and then I think, Mary, Mary, these are your proposals based on just putting it out there for the board to consider, right?
Correct, and, and just in general, the intent was to add it as its own line item, so it stood alone, and we mirrored, or I proposed for a starting point to mirror the other uses. So this proposes an A2 for marijuana cultivator in Office Park, Industrial, Industrial Park, and Limited Industrial Park, and.
And Jen, I think you had noted, this, we're not talking about a cornfield here. These, these cultivations, for the most part, are happening in large warehouses.
They're inside, for security reasons.
Climate control.
And climate.
Right, so, that's where it is. I do note, and I know she's not here, but Sarah had made a comment at the last meeting about whether or not Limited Industrial should, and that's for the board to decide, whether any of the uses, given that Limited Industrial's only that little area where the Suez Coala is.
Yep.
And it's pretty, I mean, the Suez Coala may not be there forever.
What, do you think her?
I think she said it was right next to the Beale Street Fields.
Oh.
Is that right? Do you remember Sarah saying that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's up to the board, whether or not you want to allow any of these uses in that. So Limited Industrial's only that tiny, one little area in the town.
Yep.
And just so for the board.
Just on Terry Drive there, is it?
Yep, yep.
To put this in perspective, so you're looking at a big industrial building, a 46,000 square foot industrial building now, so in the industrial zone, it would be an A2.
Right, so for example, that building that's being proposed, right on the edge of the shipyard, that's not technically part of the shipyard permit? That's going to be what, like a boat?
Storage warehouse.
Boat storage facility, but it could be become a, you know, a cultivator or a manufacturer, because that's the industrial zone right there.
Correct.
On 3A.
Just as a reference, as you think about what a cultivator is, you know, our gut reaction is it's outside, it's not, it's probably inside, contained.
But it's not permitted in Business A or B, so would we consider not including it there?
So Gary, these are all just Mary's suggestions.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's up to the board to change around those letters any way you feel is appropriate.
You can narrow this as much as you want, because it's an agricultural use, that's why I, I didn't propose Business A and B. But when you get down to the retail establishments, you'll see different zones for the different classes.
So I'd like to ask a question. So when we talk about not being overly restrictive, right, so we can't zone something out of, pretend you're allowing it and zone it out, I understand that, but on a granular level, as we go through each of these uses, do we have to allow each of these uses?
No.
Like, how does that translate?
Because Hingham is a no community, Hingham has the ability. You can ban them altogether, limit the number of, you can limit the number in total, and you can prohibit one or more types within the city or town.
Okay.
So, for example, I believe it's Andover, North Andover.
Yep, they're all there doing the cultivation.
Is, they're only permitting cultivation, manufacturing, research facilities. Well, that's what's proposed, and in their industrial park area. So that's the only type that they're proposing to their town meeting to allow.
Okay. Hmm, okay, so as we go through, so then, as we go through each of these uses, we should have that in line, in terms of, and I suppose we could limit the number per type as well that.
I, see, that one I find, I mean, so now.
That's a little more arbitrary, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because if you're, I don't know, you get to issues of, do you want competition, not competition, if you're giving somebody a monopoly, or, so, but that's obviously, I think that one's a little bit more complicated than going to type, but the statute allows you to limit the number, so that's.
Feels like an easier conversation to say, do we want retail or not? Do we want agricultural or not? Do we want industrial or not? And then start thinking about the zones.
So under this allocation, the zone would be South Hingham, from what I'm seeing, right? Would it be limited to South Hingham based on these A2 allocations?
For agricultural, it says an A2 in Office Park, which is in South Hingham.
That's.
Industrial, so that's the shipyard area.
All this purple.
And South Hingham. And Industrial Park, that's the Suez Coala area.
And, no, no, Industrial Park is up in South Hingham.
Oh, okay. The Industrial Park here in South Hingham, and then limited.
So there is no.
Shipyard and Derby Street.
Right, so Industrial is only up on 3A.
Yeah.
And Industrial Park is South Hingham.
Yep, and Limited Industrial.
So Industrial is North Hingham, and Industrial Park is South Hingham.
Limited Industrial's just that one.
Gray area.
It's, Limited Industrial is just North Hingham. Office Park is both.
Yep.
Although Alliance is going on the one Office Park district.
That Office Park.
We have right now is going to be Alliance.
Broadstone, right?
So that puts it up in South Hingham.
So purely for marijuana cultivator or marijuana.
Well, right, that's up to, that's in italics, because I wasn't sure where the board wanted to stick it.
And just time.
Yes, I know. Um, all right, in light of our hard stop at 8:30, I think that, I think that now we understand, not that we didn't already, but I think that our goal is to now go through it on our own, and come back to the table at the next meeting with some thoughts on what we think of what Mary has proposed, because Mary simply put this out here for us to have something to react to, which is fair and super helpful, but now it's time for us to react. And hopefully, we can get Bill and Sarah up to speed on, hopefully, they're watching.
But what we could do is, we could, we had some edits just on that first section, so Mary and I could get that to the place where the board can proofread it and say, yep, we're good with up through item whatever.
Yep.
And then.
Yeah, I can go.
And for the board, if you could particularly, item 10, 19, 20, and 23.
Yep.
So that's 10, 19, 20, and 23.
Yep.
Those are the sections that really get to the meat of it.
Okay.
The other ones are primarily adding that special condition 10.
Right.
So if the board were to really focus on those, 10, 19, 20, and 23.
And then also items 3, 4, and 5, which are amending definitions to exclude marijuana establishments from like the.
Farmers market, home occupation, and light industrial.
That's the one part we haven't touched on yet.
Yeah, so, I mean, as Mary said, all the other items, it's taking existing uses and saying, like, retail, but not marijuana, restaurants, but not marijuana.
Right.
And creating, and then 10, 19, and 20, is that it?
Yeah, those are the.
And 23.
And 23.
Are the actual line items allowing.
Yep.
Them. So those are really the 3, 4, 5, 10, 19, 20, and 23 of the substantive.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so then, for the next meeting, which we need to figure out when that's going to be, hopefully, because we already had consensus prior to tonight on the ban, hopefully, we'll be able to go through the ban and vote on that, the registered marijuana dispensaries.
There's changes to those, but it's conforming it to the statute.
It's not, it's not right.
It's really just more cleanup.
Right, cleanup. The definitions are very straightforward, and we went over them tonight, and that's just mirrored in that. So those three, I feel like, are in good shape to be teed up at the next meeting, hopefully.
Agreed.
And then this one is still going to require a bit of deliberation, certainly, but it seems, I think we got pretty far tonight, in that we started to get into the nitty-gritty. So I guess we should talk about when, we'll discuss this next.
So the board, the next time we have, I don't know if you would have time on the 15th, you have accessory dwelling units, you also have settles glass that night, the Station Street project on the 15th. Susan will be at that hearing.
We're going to say that.
Yes, however, one of them may end up moving, you know, I don't know yet.
Yep.
So, one, you could proceed two different ways. You could continue it to that night, in case we end up having time that night, and if you don't, find another night, or you could just say, you know what, we're just going to do accessory dwelling units if Station Street continues, we're just going to do accessory dwelling units that night, that's enough, and just put another night for this.
I would prefer that, because I think there's a lot to discuss on the ADUs. We don't want to rush it.
I mean, I agree that it's unlikely we would finish ADUs in the next night, especially with other items on the agenda, but it wouldn't hurt to put it on the agenda in case we were to get to it, but, I still think we need to, I do think we need to schedule another night.
If we don't, if we continue it beyond, and then you find you're all together, and you have time, we couldn't then just open it up, is my point.
Right, right.
So you could continue to it, but maybe we could identify another night where we're all available for bylaws, for the sake of advisory and.
Yeah, okay, so, where does that leave us? We don't, we don't want to do this over February break. We're meeting the 26th already. Oh, the 14th we're not meeting.
No, after several discussions, we are not meeting on the 14th.
So how about the 28th?
27th, right?
28th works better, right, for you guys?
Yeah, Wednesday's better for me.
Oh, right.
And for you, okay. Does that work for you, Susan?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes, but let me just clarify, is the board going to tonight make the motion to continue these articles to the meeting of the 15th? With the understanding that they most likely will.
A double continue?
Well, no, but we can all, we can all hold the 28th.
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to hold the 28th.
And just all acknowledge that you're going to need it.
Or not, if we need it.
We're definitely going to need it.
Right, I, right, but if, if your other matters get continued, you could end up having that.
Okay.
You could, right, depending on how.
Yeah, all right, yeah, let's go that way, let's put them both on the 15th, and then we will all keep the 28th in pen for this.
So the, what I'm hearing is the board is going to continue all of the marijuana articles to the meeting of February 15th, understanding that it's already a very full agenda. So they're also going to hold February 28th.
So on that agenda, Mary, the ADU goes first at 7 o'clock, because that's already been scheduled.
No, you have another.
We have other matters before that.
What do we have?
We have Station Street that night also.
On February 15th, however, that could get continued.
But I do think we will discuss ADUs before marijuana, if that's what you're, yeah.
Right, accessory dwelling units is the primary focus.
Right.
But if Station Street gets moved, you might be able to take care of the ban or the.
All right, yeah, that's true.
Just, good.
All right, so do you want to make a motion? I would make a motion, then, that we continue the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the Hingham zoning bylaw related to registered marijuana dispensaries, ban on marijuana establishments, the regulation of the sale and consumption of marijuana not medically prescribed, and the definitions related to marijuana not medically prescribed until Thursday, February 15th, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn. Is anybody going to second me?
Do you second my motion to adjourn?
Second, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
All in.
Aye. All right.